The meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for June 25th, 2025 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one, published to the Courier-News, two, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, three, posted to the municipal website, and four, given to the clerk administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare is excused, Chris Addicks is excused, Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Vroom is excused, Chairperson Werner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, I need an approval, a motion for approval on minutes from June 11th.
So moved.
Art Aikens?
Yes.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Yes.
Chairperson Werner?
Yes. All right, we have no resos, right? Yes, all right, so we have.
What about me?
Did you forget him?
Yeah.
Did you, did you actually say that out loud?
And it's on record.
Not into the mic, not into the microphone, nobody knows, nobody will, nobody will remember that. Yes, on the partial that I was here for. Apologies.
So just, just one correction on that then, the mayor's list is absent on the.
Thank you.
On the minutes.
And granites was spelled wrong too. And dowdy.
Okay, so next we have Avalon, Somerville Station Urban Renewal with before us for a couple of updates and changes that they'd like to make, I'm going to turn it over to Kara, our county, our council.
Okay, so I. All right, I think we, a lot of you will remember, we've sometimes entertained amendments to conditions of approval, and we have a procedure for how we do that. The individuals that voted on the prior resolution that contain the conditions have to first of all, review and make a finding as to whether the amendment to the condition would have changed their vote on the initial resolution and application, and then if the answer is any affirmative that it would not, the request for amendment to the condition can continue for a vote without notice. So that's what we're basically looking at tonight. You have in front of you some plans that were presented by Avalon, and there are a number of elevations. The top portion show in red circles, the current view, and then the bottom shows what has essentially been deleted. So the top is what they're asking for approval of, and the, the bottom is essentially what was previous. The top is what they're asking for approval of.
Yes.
The circles, and the bottom is what was originally proposed. So the red circles is what's new, and that's the amendment. The condition that we're looking to change is condition C on page seven of the resolution, which states that the development and construction associated with the Phase Two application shall be the same as represented to the board on all submitted plans, plots, drawings, and renderings, and in accordance with any amendments as required by the resolution and the redevelopment agreement. So essentially, you have to take a look at what's now proposed by way of the, the red circles. I'm sorry, okay, so the red circles are what's being removed. So the top is what was approved and the bottom is what.
Bottom is what was approved and the top is what's proposed.
Okay, that's not what he said.
Because the red circles on the bottom are what are being removed.
My circles on the top.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's why.
On ours, it's the opposite, which is why you keep saying that.
All right, so the red circles are being removed.
Yes.
Okay, and what is, without the red circles is what is proposed.
Correct.
That is the change. So we need to take a look at that, and if everybody could, you know, take a, a look and, and make a determination in your mind as to whether or not that change would have affected your vote on the original application. So the, the people that are eligible to vote would be, so Dare is not here, Mr. Addicks, Kraska, Van Horn, Gallagher, Werner, Vroom, Cleveland, and Manilio. So first, once everybody's done, we need a motion and a second for a vote as to whether or not this proposed amendment to the condition allowing for these changes would have in any way affected your vote to approve the original resolution and the original application for Phase Two.
So I, I will move for that vote, everything you just said.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
So I don't, I don't think I was here when that was voted on.
I have you here as voting.
Yeah.
The final.
I don't think he was here.
I was at the first hearing, but not the second hearing on this one.
So you were at prelimi-? Okay, that's not what I have here, but that's all right, you can abstain or not.
Well, if I'm knowledgeable, I have no issues with it.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Van Horn?
Yes.
Chairperson Werner?
Yes.
Okay, so that was the vote as to whether or not these changes would have affected your original vote on the application. Now that the answer to that is yes, you, you agree that these amendments would not have affected your vote, now we need a vote to approve the actual amendments to the site plans and amend that condition C on page seven of the application to incorporate them as revised plans.
Before we go that far, on example three, just on page three.
Yep.
They have.
Now just let's make sure we're looking at, mine is the northeast view. Is that the same one? Okay.
Yes, well, on approved, the lower one for our plan, it just seems like they took out all the.
No, approved is the, approved is the one with the circles.
Nope.
Damn it. Oh, yes, it's already approved.
Yes, okay.
Yes, the approved ones, it seems that when you look at the other one, they missed several spots where they did intend to change things. It seems mostly like a darkened area underneath windows. You could see them, all, all the circles, you see the dark, you see the, the circles, and then you look at their new proposal, the dark bands are not there, but, no, and that's okay, but it, on, just for example, on this plan, right here, they're gone. No circle here, no dark band there, I'm just saying if this is what it's supposed to be, we should just accept the newest.
Can I see, what can I, because I'm not understanding.
Well, this is currently approved.
All right, so that's, mine is different.
There's a circle. But then, if you look at this plan, this is not circled, but it's certainly not here. So I'm just making sure that we should not just rely on the circle.
I understand what you're saying.
Basically, taking all the black bands out, whatever those were, they're all coming out everywhere, because they're over here, and they're not here. See what I'm saying? See these little black bands? They took them out. I'm just saying, this is fine, but if this is a statement of record, it should be, we're going to, you know, hold the circles.
I think it's just not, yeah, I think it's just not circled.
Right, well, this is what I'm saying, but, but basically.
But we should go by the proposed plan.
So in essence, what, what you're saying is the, the elevations labeled as proposed is what would be the amendments to the condition as opposed to the circles.
Yes.
Yes, and that, that seems like that's, that's accurate.
Is there a reason for the change? I'm just wondering.
I do not know, we do have the applicant's architect here, if you want to ask, answer, ask, ask him a question.
Well, I mean, we're going through this, we might as well ask why.
Yeah, I think they're, they're really cosmetic, it's, there's no significant, it's de minimis, it's, it's not. I guess, yeah, the question is just.
The square footage of the.
Yeah.
Windows of the apartments right there.
It's, it's cosmetic.
They're cosmetic.
Yeah, but I agree with Larry, is, is there a reason for the change?
Can we just get your name and firm for the record, and I'll swear, yeah?
On the mic, please.
Arthur Michaels, Michaels and Waldron Architects.
Okay, if you could just raise your right hand, just for the testimony you're about to give this board, it's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
After reviewing the design and going through it, we thought some of the places were getting a little muddy and over, overdesigned.
A little busy.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would agree.
We wanted to simplify it up and clean it up, you know, particularly with some of the, of the dormers in there where there were several that are a bunch together and so on, and we just felt it was a cleaner look, and it was an improvement. I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the new preparer.
Should, should we open it up to the public first?
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
And if you want to, but.
It is not a public hearing.
So I'll make that motion to approve the new proposed plan, as noted on the drawings.
Okay, so the motion is to amend condition number two, to incorporate the proposed elevations noted on the plans submitted as exhibits at EX one, two, three, and four. As the plans that were approved by the board.
So moved.
Second.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Chairperson Werner?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, pending business, discussion items, the decks. Mike, I know that you gave us a new, the ordinance, and I know that there were a couple of adjustments asked by council, so we're going to also include those.
Yes, I had discussed this with Kara, and Kara came up with some clever notes to address the council's concerns with the improvement coverage.
All right, so Mike just sprung this on me, so he says it's clever, but I just want to make sure it's accurate, so everybody let me know. If we're taking a look at it, we've got the following, our exemptions and the calculations of improvement coverage. A is the first 100 square feet of a deck is defined above. I thought we could add a B as a deck constructed over an existing impervious area. So basically, the mindset being you already have, let's say, 50 square feet of impervious. If you put a deck on top of that, you're not counting it twice, and there's no need to imply, apply the exemptions either, because it's impervious over impervious. Okay, and then, my understanding for the second piece would be later on, so after the A and B, we just add kind of like a separate paragraph that says, impervious coverage shall not be permitted to be constructed under a deck without being calculated. So for instance, you have a second floor deck, and then, okay. That would be the two changes.
Concern with council was somewhere down the road, if you would pave underneath the deck, let's say you had a six, a two-story deck, and you say, I need storage space, and you paved it, that would defeat the purpose of having the slots.
Correct.
And the infiltration, so down the road, it just clarifies that if you pave it down the road, that the exemptions.
Yeah, you have to calculate in your.
Right.
Can you just read the language again, I want to hear it.
Imper- for the second part?
Yeah.
Impervious coverage shall not be permitted to be constructed under a deck without being calculated towards impervious.
Okay, I think that's clear enough, that if it's already there, you can put the deck over it, but you cannot now construct it under the deck.
And that's why I wanted two separate sections, one that talks about putting a deck over existing, and one that talks about putting impervious under a deck.
I would suggest putting that one first.
Okay.
I would switch them, just, just for clarity's sake, so it says, if, you, you can't put impervious under the deck. However, if you already have impervious, you can't calculate it, you shouldn't calculate it twice.
Right. All right, I'll move that.
Yeah, I think it's just a little clearer.
Yep, I'll, I'll move it to under the definition of improvement coverage. I'll play around with it that way, but as long as you're okay with the language, I'll play around where it is.
I just have a secondary question. Can you put in a mathematical example that people will understand? Because the last time.
Other than that one that's there?
Something a little tougher, because I got phone calls, and people were upset, and they were college educated, and I'm not. So, but I understood it, but they didn't get it, so I want to make sure that they understand what it means by the first 100 feet are exempt.
So do you see that, that calculation there?
I do.
That doesn't work, you're saying?
It seems to be in the, the last time, and it caused confusion, so that's why.
So you need something better, okay.
Tougher, a little more like, look, you have a deck that's, you're, you're putting in a deck that's 150 square feet.
So the improve, all right, so let's talk through this, the improvement coverage calculation of a 150-square-foot deck shall be 25 square feet, meaning 100 square feet is exempt. 25 square feet is remaining, which is 50% of the remaining 50 square feet, so maybe.
Maybe we could just break that down a little bit.
Yeah, we could break that down a little more, and you know what, maybe we do it, maybe we do it.
A line of.
Yeah, as opposed to a written, we'll do it like a math equation.
Yes.
Something like that, I think that may be a little easier. Yep, I got it, no problem. Okay.
And this way, it's always in there, so it's always just a math.
No, I like those, I think that makes, yeah.
Exams, yeah, examples and calculations make good, it's good. No.
All right, I could do that too. No problem.
All right, are we going to have it come back next meeting, or?
No, no, the, the council has introduced it, they have, so we're, the council shot it back here for final comments with their comments.
Correct, so they've already made the changes essentially by having that conversation.
So now these, these comments will come back up to council for public hearing and adoption.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll take, yeah, they're, they're going to fix it.
They're going to fix it and send it up.
They'll send it to, to the administrator, and that'll be on our next agenda for public hearing and adoption.
Right. When, when is your meeting, Mayor?
It's not this Monday, because it's the 30th, so it's a bi-week, so it's the, the following, which would be.
I'll do it by the end of this week, don't worry about it, I just want to make sure.
Seventh, yeah, seventh.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, zoning, let's go to zoning first. You have our reports here, do you want to?
Yeah, it's discussed at the last meeting, you have a PDF and a hard copy of all the annual reports from 2006 for, up until 2024. The idea being that as we look at master plans, land use ordinances, this might be helpful to look at what's going on over the last 18 years that the Board of Adjustment has seen. So it's just for future, you have that, we discussed it, yeah, we discussed the annual reports from 2024 at the last meeting, and I saw that I can certainly follow up. The Environmental Commission was given a similar document, and I thought it was helpful for their uses.
Yeah, so, and I, I know that we had talked about it at the last meeting, these are, these reports are really good to look at, especially as we start looking at maybe possibly wanting to rezone, or looking at the zoning in certain areas, issues like decks, things like that, what we see in some, in the, from these reports should also help, hey, we have a trend, we're constantly getting a denial, or whatever it is, whatever's causing some trouble for some residents to do some work that we don't want trouble for anymore, we don't want complications for anymore, then this, these reports give us that opportunity to really address that from our perspective and get it changed. Okay, thank you. Final affordable housing update?
It's passed, we're, well, we passed it at our last meeting. The Borough Council had a, a, a good discussion, some spirited discussion and some clarifications, and passed it unanimously, well, I shouldn't say that we passed it, we supported it unanimously. It has now been filed with, with DCA, and we're in good shape. Yeah.
Okay.
So good work all, very good work, that, it's, it's a significant milestone, and, and it's something that we all worked very hard at to craft something that was purely Somerville. It wasn't a cookie cutter, it was for Somerville, for the betterment of Somerville, so, good work.
You were the first of all my boards to get yours all done, so for what that.
Yeah, they're all scrambling right now.
Yeah, ever, absolutely, this has been hell week.
Special meetings.
So, yep, yep.
Yep. Good, good work.
Is this the part where we say, thanks, Colin?
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, Mike, Colin, we had a whole crew of people, there was, was a lot of people around the table, and everybody had a hand in this, and it was, it was very good.
All right, the improvement coverage subcommittee, did you guys, I know that we had brought it up last time, maybe looking at ensuring that we weren't missing anything that would be issues, did you have a chance to? I know you think you wanted to pull some stuff from Borough Hall.
Uh, yeah, we haven't had it since, but we're still looking into it.
All right, any updates, Mike, for redevelopment plans, master plan or zoning right now?
Just that I think the council will be making a recommendation, I'm sure the mayor can talk on this, looking at the West Main Street to, to address the granites, I think the concept went over well, so it looks like that's coming.
Yeah, so we had the concept review of the granites building, and it was met with overwhelming support from the Borough Council. So we talked about the, you know, some of the next steps, and we're in discussions now on whether it should be a recommendation from the planning board up to council to take a look at the West Main Street redevelopment area, or vice versa. So we're kind of walking through that now and having a good discussion on, on the most appropriate matter. I think the legal process is it just comes from council right to the planning board as a, a recommendation that the planning board look at it. My recollection is in the past, we've done it the other way, where the council would make the recommendation to.
Planning board would.
Sorry, the planning board would make the recommendation to council, council would look at it and then say, okay, yeah, we agree, and we think that you should take a look at it, so, I guess it's, it might be splitting hairs a little bit, but I, I sometimes think that's appropriate, it gives transparency to the process. That's my take on it. I'm staring right at you.
Spoke with redevelopment council?
Yeah.
And their recommendation was that the governing body request the planning board to do a study.
Okay, if the council says that, then we'll, we'll follow that.
All right, so we should be getting that soon then?
Probably the next meeting.
All right.
Yeah, it's drafted and being sent in.
Yeah.
And just for everybody's, you know, transparency for also, we have behind the scenes, Colin's been working on an overall timeline so that we can kind of see, you know, because this is not the only redevelopment plan, we know that we want to look at everything. So we're, we will also have some kind of a timeline to keep us, because there's going to be kind of, it's, unfortunately, we're not in a position where you can say, okay, we're going to do this one, and then when this is all done, we're going to go to the next one. We have a lot of hats up in the air and a lot of things that we, you know, we don't want to miss within our redevelopment plans. So, and the master plan is going to be, is already, have you already, you've already started sending that out to the committees, correct? They're breaking it up yet?
Hasn't gone out yet, hopefully later this week, by Friday.
Yeah.
Have it out. Yeah, well, one of the things we want to do is actually bring the, the, the chair, vice chair of the different constituencies in and have a discussion with them, and expectations, deliverables, so that everybody has an understanding of what we're looking for, and giving them that timeline as well of when we're looking for it back, so that we can start to parse it out to the different, so we're not tackling all of it all at once, and then bringing each constituency in one at a time, recreation, historic, environmental. This way, they're tackling their subject matter, and then making their recommendations, redlined recommendations to, to the planning board.
Okay.
Good, yeah.
All right, EV charging stations, does you have a chance, you put draft ordinance of some hearing, everything? I know we tasked Mike in the last meeting to say, hearing a lot of our thoughts in the general areas, breaking it up, come up with something, taking, again, what he heard from us in various different ways, and putting it together, and giving us something that we can actually look at, read through, make comments on, agree with, disagree, but at least it's something now that we can actually physically look at, if you want to.
Yeah, thank you. You have the EV ordinance, what's on the books is there, the red type is what the changes were, and it was essentially, as the chairwoman says, broken up into four categories, so that the, it'd be more, each category the planning board could drill down to. One being homeowners, new, new housing, the UCC requiring the receptacle to be in the, in the garage. So you'll see language there saying, try to put the receptacle close to the garage to encourage charging outside the structure, and encourage that the driveway is sufficient that you can have a car a few feet, something away from the structure, just deference of, abundance of caution, I think it is, so that's one scenario. The other scenario is a freestanding deck, and you have incorporated some comments and recommendations from the fire marshal and the Board of Engineers on fire hydrants and 20-foot and perimeter. So you'll see those, I should say that the, the, the red on all four scenarios is essentially what the, the Board of Adjustment, not the Board of Adjustment, the Board, the Board of Engineers and the fire marshal had recommended, so I incorporate their comments into this.
So, and just to clarify too, so, so everybody's following it, on page eight, actually, I think it's.
Yeah.
Starts eight, right? Yes, so starts on eight with the three different, the four different choices, first being that part, surface, number three, surface parking lot installation, private garage, the single two, you know, the townhome, and either a single residency or townhome. The next one would be a single-use parking structure, that's, that's that standalone that Mike's talking about. And then the last was mixed-use structures, meaning decks with residential, commercial, or anything above it.
And on page two, it just added a little flexibility, saying public health is paramount, so on page two, you'll see item five. It just says, install, basically, make ready parking locations to protect the public and the public, public property at large, just a blanket statement. The, it was not covered in the original one, so you have the four scenarios. The ones I think that we spent a lot of time with the board was, was the decks. So the decks are broken down into two decks, freestanding and decks that are, decks that are mixed, mixed-use developments, being they're attached to retail, residential, they're not standalone parking structures, so. And then you'll see the language, the, a little out of the box, there are materials out there in different industries that can handle the heat, there are. They're not readily been done on, on decks, but they have been done for kilns, smelting, foundries, aerospace. There are ceramic tiles and things that can be done. It's just not something that's been done in the past, because we frankly never dealt with heats in 4,000 degrees on vehicles before. So this is all cutting edge, so you see some language here, just out of the box, speaking, and says, this, and it's, it's going to be flexible, we don't know what the future is, but the thinking is to protect the structure, the concrete structure, so that if you, you know, if the unfortunate happens, that there is a fire, that we don't lose the structure. The idea is, a lot of these applications and decks, if you had a EV or a hybrid car fire, every scenario I see, the deck is damaged, you lose either partial or the whole deck until it's fixed. So that's, in Somerville's position, that's a huge structure that would adversely impact the whole community, being where do you park, how do you? So I think that some creative thinking might be in line for trying to protect the structure. Should the board and the council say, yes, you got to allow EV charging in these structures, some, some abundance of caution.
Do a question on page eight.
Yeah.
Of five six, it says a standpipe shall be located on the same floor and be minimum 50 feet away from EV spaces. Does that imply that you'll have sprinkler heads at that spot, or is that another issue?
It's another issue.
Should that be included?
The fire marshal, yeah, the fire marshal wanted a minimum, but not a maximum, I had roached this, you know, is there a max of 100 feet, 200 feet, and he says, I'd like to be that silent on that, so that we can work that out in the field and there, case by case.
For the sprinkler heads.
For the sprinkler heads, no, for the standpipe, for the standpipe.
But to Larry's point, maybe we should also add in there about the sprinkler system.
Well, where, where should it be, having a pipe that goes by is nice, but.
Or the requirements that we require of that sprinkler system.
So the sprinkler system, you said the standpipe is what they hook up to, to get more water?
Yeah.
So the sprinkler is separate from the standpipe?
We have a high volume fire.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah.
And, and Mike, just to that note, back to three C, I think we want that to say a minimum of 100 feet, not within 100 feet for the hydrant, I don't think you want the hydrant right next to the.
Yes.
Actual fire.
I'll check, but. Robert Lynn was saying, no, he wants on the surface parking lot, he wants, he doesn't want the, apparently, they, they only have 500, 100 feet of five-inch hose.
So maybe we should say.
He was saying on that scenario, he wanted it 100 feet maximum.
Okay.
Because of the hose.
I just didn't know if we wanted a minimum away so that.
Yes, I.
You can't hook up a hose standing right next to the actual fire, I assume?
Yeah, you don't want the hydrant in front of the.
Right, I, I was more comfortable with minimums, but I was told, don't go with the maximum, and you're right, Jason, you're saying, clarify with 100 feet, what is it, a minimum max, what, what are we exactly saying with 100 feet? I agree.
So, so for the decks, I, I thought what we finally came up with for Avalon was a very good standard, minimum standard? And is that reflected in here, all of those items that we used for Avalon in their deck?
No, page, page nine, page six.
That's for the decks that have nothing above it.
Right.
Is the standard.
Yeah.
That's the standard for the decks to have standalone. That's the standard for the decks to have standalone decks without mixed-use above it, is what this is.
Well, I, I would, I, I'm not adverse to taking those that we standardized over here and reflecting that in the standalone decks as well.
It is in the standalone, it's not in the-
Not where residential's above.
Right.
There you go.
Okay, yeah. So that set the standard, Avalon set the standard?
For standalone decks, but not residential above.
Okay.
But, so, let's talk about that for a little bit. Avalon is in a mixed-use structure. It's incorporated in the same building. So I would say that actually falls within parking facilities located within a mixed-use structure.
It does.
Okay, and that says prohibited.
Yep.
So that's where I'm confused. So I thought we were saying, if you're going to have a parking within a mixed-use structure, you just can't have the residential immediately above the parking.
That's what we did for Avalon, but that's not what people were saying, what the board was refaying, what they wanted moving forward.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, the, moving forward, because we didn't have an ordinance in place-
Understood.
We said, we, the, the, the board, the board's leaning towards taking the position of no EV parking-
None at all.
-underneath a residential structure.
But to his point, taking what we adapted over there and now applying that to the standalone decks.
Right.
We did do that.
Understood.
And just so everybody's clear, the, for the single-use deck, it says that the parking is on the-
Yes.
Top, takes, the, the surface cover. Therefore, there's no sprinklers sighted there because it's out in the open. And to put sprinklers, you would have to have this crazy contraption-
Yeah.
-over the spaces. So that's why there was discussion about high-volume sprinklers, but that was not in the surface deck because of the location being specified.
Yeah.
Just so everybody knows that, it's the surface parking deck, upper floor. It's open to the air or something.
Yeah, it's open air.
How do you do it, guys? I mean, that's where the bottom line was.
Mike, can you clarify something for me? So if we're going F1, the paragraph F1 on page seven. I just want to understand what each one of those four categories are. So, shall fall into one of the four scenarios, surface parking lots, so that's three on page eight.
Yeah.
That's easy.
Four.
Single-use parking structures, that's five on page eight?
Yes, private parking garage associated with things, that's four.
Private parking structures included in mixed-use buildings, blah, 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 blah. So, three and four is actually four on page eight, right?
Yeah, page eight, you have this-
Six allows nothing.
Right.
Okay.
Six is what's prohibited, the mixed-use decks, and this is prohibiting that. Three is the surface parking lots, and that tells you perimeter locations to driveways, streets.
So maybe we say the location of permitted EVs to be in make-ready spaces falls into one of four scenarios. And that's the four that you have there, because the fifth one, which essentially is six on page nine, is not going to be.
Well, you got three, four, five, you have four, you have four scenarios, the numbers are-
Yeah, but what, what I'm missing is-
It's only permitted in three of the four.
Yeah, parking facilities located within mixed-use structures is not one of your four scenarios, right?
It is.
Yeah, in mixed-use buildings.
So that's number six.
Yeah, number six.
But if we look at the paragraph F1, where is it there?
So it says, a structure containing EVs, make-ready parking spaces, so it says right above that, parking structures included in mixed-use buildings.
Parking structures.
Third line, starts on the second, goes to the third.
Parking structures included in mixed-use buildings, a structure containing, got it, okay. And other uses such as-
So the residential would be-
Associated with single-family dwellings.
I mean, basically, you have surface parking lots, one, private parking deck or garages, that's the two-family, two.
All right, I see it, yep, I got it now.
The single-use parking, three, and the mixed-use decks, four. Those are the four scenarios. You have the, the general comments on two is applicable to all scenarios.
Got it.
I was trying to use as much as the existing ordinance as possible.
Yep.
So under two, installation requirements for all four scenarios. So, those are the general requirements for all four. Obviously, one, three, one of the fours prohibited, but on this writing. So then you go into, then three is the, is, goes through the surface installation requirements. Four is the private garages, and with the private garages, we're just basically saying, trying to get the car charging away from the structure. That's all that we're trying to accomplish, because the UCC governs on the receptacle, and it, it is what it is. The single-use parking structures is what you were talking about, is three, that's the parking on the, the, the upper floor of the parking structure along the perimeter, and that's the standpipe and some kind of ceramic tile or something coating that somehow protects the structure. I don't think you can get the Ts or these, most of these decks are pre-manufactured. They come and there are a big Lego set, right? The Ts, I don't think you can do some exotic coating in the Ts, I don't think that's practical. I think the only thing you can do is put something on top of the concrete to protect it, like you would do in a kiln. If you're doing a kiln or a foundry, that's what you do, you, you put a-
An additional coating.
Additional coating, so D basically just is a catch-all saying, guys, try to protect the structure, public property. Just something. There's ways of doing this, this is, you know, they've had, the, the, this, this space shuttle in 1980 had ceramic piles to resist the, I mean, this technology is not new, it's been around forever. It's just not been applied here, so, and you could argue it's a financial impact, but I, I don't know how, if you have a fire, an EV fire, you don't want to lose your deck.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a-
Best efforts to not to lose-
It's about the investment, in my opinion, it's about, it's, you know, the public safety, but it's about the investment, because the first and foremost, public safety, we're offering a public safe way. And then the other side of it for them is, we, we're also trying to make your deck survive, because we want the public to get through that.
And what the, the fire marshal is telling me, that a lot of times, you don't catch it soon enough, and you can't fight it, you have to wait.
No, you have to wait.
You, you can't get in there. Therefore, if it's going to burn for, let's say, hours, best efforts, in my opinion, to protect the structure. If you can't put it out because of the heat, whatever, you can't do it, it's not safe. You have to evacuate and let it do its thing, and then the next question is, well, can we save the structure, in my opinion? So that's the, that's the paragraph there.
Okay.
Any comments?
I have a couple of questions about the, the mixed-use. So I, I don't know, do we have to put something in there regarding what the mixed-use is? Because when I think mixed-use, I think two uses in a building. So what about if it's just an apartment building or just commercial?
Maybe, can you reiterate what you have in that first paragraph, Mike?
Yeah, it's- Yeah, just for clarity?
Yeah, a little clarity of what mixed-use, I know the parking is an accessory use, but, and then the other question for mixed-use, now, if you have a deck that's on the property but not under or above the use, is that okay?
So it's adjacent?
It's adjacent.
So that would fall into the standalone?
Standalone?
Yeah.
The mixed-use, I know, at least I was envisioning is something has to be above it.
Yeah, maybe we rephrase and stop calling it mixed-use.
So connected is okay, just not above, that's where I think I was getting at.
Or located within another use.
John, I mean, it's-
Nothing above it.
It's defined, it's defined in here in the red, structures containing the make-ready parking spaces and other uses such as residential, retail, et cetera.
Above it, I think we need to be clear on that.
Clarify, I can, we can, that's a good point.
Yeah.
You want that beefed up to clarify exactly what a mixed-use building is.
Because I, I, to his point, I could see a developer saying, well, it's adjacent to my property, so now is it still mixed-use? So I, I think we do want to clarify that.
Yeah, and if it is a, if it is joined to a building but not below the building, do we have different parameters? Do we then treat it so that we have to pull the EV charging away from the adjacency of that building?
Yeah. So it would be on the opposite side of where the building is? They can't have them, even if it's at the top of the deck, it can't be against the building.
Yeah.
So we could either say a minimum separation from other structures, or, or what the mayor is saying is if it's abutting another structure, to clarify where those EV chargers are.
Yes.
There's the two ways of handling it, there's a board, one is minimum separation to a different structure, or-
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have to-
I think, I think it falls under the same parameters as the, the surface parking.
Yeah.
To some degree.
Maybe we use the same parameter, right, don't we have?
Separation of 20 feet from a different structure on the same site?
I'd have to rely on the fire official, how, how far do those-
Right, gotcha. All right, so beef up mixed-use, clearly define that more.
Yeah.
And to address John's question of, yes, you can have multiple structures on the site, have a minimum separation from the freestanding deck to the other structures. And that's going to be, we'll get some feedback, or I'll get some feedback from the fire marshal and the Board of Engineers on that.
Yeah.
Was it from the deck or from the charger to the building? Like if the deck is connected, because it probably will be, because-
You can have the deck connected.
Right.
You can, you said.
It can be abutted next to it.
Yeah.
That's where we're going to say, we're going to push it against on the other side.
The charger is going to have a setback.
Right, that's where you have a setback for the chargers.
You're saying the deck can be abutting a different structure, however, if it's abutting or adjacent to another structure?
The chargers have to be at least 20 feet away.
I think, like, let's look at the, the one downtown, Jack's, the one, that, abuts, that inside of that, right?
And separated.
Yeah, the county deck abuts the county building.
Okay, the county deck, so with that, once you have that where it's abutted against a building, it's not that it's not allowed, you just have to have that separation.
Of 20 feet.
Yeah, you got to push it back.
Or whatever the fire official.
A separation from the EV chargers and make-ready from the abut, the abutting structure.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's be the opposite side.
Additive structure.
But accessible to FD.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you can get to the top, it's going to be accessible, it's just a matter of, you don't want it on top of the abutted building.
If, if we had an application that comes through that wants to change six, that's the one, that's like the-
They would have to come in for a variance.
Yeah, it'd be a C variance.
But it's, it's, with, with us or adjustment?
That would be a C variance, it would come to us.
There's no Ds that's here, if there's Ds, it's Board of Adjustment, but C variance regardless.
Yep.
Right, you agree with that?
I just see this being, we're going to get a flood of things that are going to say, yeah, I want it in my space, I want it underneath, and I'm going to put extra pipes in, and that'll be a variance issue.
Yep.
It's not allowed, it's a-
Yeah, I mean, we can't not allow them to come in with a variance, like-
Well, that, that's why I was just making sure that this is something that can be resolved if we have to.
Yeah, if you had, there, if you had an applicant saying, I, I'm going to do a mixed-use, I'm going to put residential above, but I have this, this technique, it's going to protect the structure, it's going to handle 5,000 degrees. The board can certainly hear that, and the proofs granted, the relief requested.
Or not.
I had a-
Yeah.
Right, right.
I had a note that I think we wanted to put some language, and Mike and I could come up with something, you know, saying that they have to show you their best efforts to comply first. That's, that's part of their proof, so.
Yes, because-
Tried to do this, I can't, here's my 12 designs, and if I comply, I don't have a project, or, you know, whatever the case may be, but they got-
But it can't, I mean, and technically, that can't be the reason, it's cost, to be honest with you. Because that can't, that doesn't, it's not an app, you know, a reason to give a variance. So, to your point, yeah, very, come, and then it falls on them to prove to us-
Right.
-that it'll work, and that public safety is still taken into consideration.
Yeah, because I think anybody can probably say, well, we need it because there's a hardship, or we need it because, you know, the C2 variance proofs are submitted, but they got to, I think you wanted to see that they literally tried to comply.
Yes.
Here's the first drawing, here's the second drawing, you know, look at it that way.
And if you, if it's prohibited, then-
Can you get your mic down?
I'm sorry. There, if it's prohibited, then the question becomes, how does what they're proposing address the life safety issues of the structure and-
That falls on them to prove it.
Residents or the public at large. So where we get off the issue of what if, this is going to happen, we address the issue, if it happens, how is this protecting the structure and the public? It moves the ball away from it's not going to happen.
Right.
The percentages are point 0000, and we get stuck on that. It becomes an issue, how are you going to prevent this scenario-
Correct.
-to protect the borough, the structure, the downtown, wherever it is, so that if this, on, this, this incident occurs, that it's not devastating to the downtown, to the developer, to the residents, to the public, to, for years to come, because you can't fix a deck quickly.
No.
As we all know.
On item six again, should we reiterate what a mixed-use structure is?
Yeah, we asked Mike to do it, he's going to do that.
Okay, thank you, just so that when they get it.
I'm going to clarify all that.
Thank you.
Exactly what it means, and then we're going to beef up the free, the, the surface, the single-use parking structure. We're going to add language that, yes, you can adjoin a structure to it. And, you know, back to the example, we can give an example, but then we're going to, I'll reach out to the Board of Engineers and the fire marshal to see, okay, in that scenario, you have to have the make-ready parking spaces some distance from the adjacent part, the party wall, for lack of a better word.
Yeah.
John, did you have anything else anyway? Barry, anything? Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Mike.
I will make the changes, I work with Kara, and the next board hearing, do you want to see the revisions back? To try to-
We'll-
Yes.
Get closure on this?
See a final draft by then, and then-
This will be on the agenda for the next meeting, and I'll get the changes, I'll get with Kara, Board of, Board of Engineers, the fire marshal will make these changes, get it out to the board hopefully a week before, and try to address.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike, I know that was a tall order.
Oh, just breaking it down, just chopping it up that we discussed, it's just putting a pen to paper, sometimes it's helpful, right?
Yep, thank you. All right, we have no ARB approvals, I have no other comments. I am going to open the meeting to the public for any comments or questions. Hearing none, closed public session, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?[1795.62]